Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
So I understand. Oh, thank you. So on the 16th, we can go ahead and get started. Our guests can introduce yourselves, of course. I'm sure we all don't agree with this vision. And I think we have about half our lot for today.
Great. Good morning, Commission and City Managers and Staff. Do I have to do something?
If the button's not green, press the button. No color at all?
Hold on. It was red for a second.
Red, now it's not. No, 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 you're okay, you're okay.
I got one, Bruleta.
Mine's did too. All right. Thank you so much, no, you're okay.
Thank you. All right, let's try that again. Make two. So, good morning, Commission, City Manager and Staff. We are excited to be here and appreciate the opportunity to share some updates about NCCJ with all of you. I am Adrienne Miller, my renowned associate and her is I'm the Executive Director over at NCCJ of Greater Dayton.
Good morning, and I'm Lake Miller, Director of Education at NCCJ.
Thanks for having us. So we wanted just to share some updates with you. Last year, at the end of 2020, where you got what event? We had the opportunity to do strategic planning and come up with a new program, a new mission and vision for our organization. So just really quickly, our new mission is to educate and empower communities to eliminate bias, bigotry, and all forms of discrimination. So we tweaked a little bit, but just updated that. Our vision is now thriving equitable communities where diversity is celebrated, celebrating diversity, bringing people together. And then we created for our first time core values. And we went through this whole process with our Board and our staff, and we brought in a consultant to work with us. And it was a really great opportunity to go through and do all of this. And I look at our first core value because I remember our list, like DEI didn't make my list because I'm like, well, that's what we do, we're a DEI organization. It's woven into everything we do. And they're like, well, that's a core value. So I learned some new things there. But, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion, we have a passion for what we do. We want to be accountable for what it is we're doing. And we hold ourselves to a very high standard of ethics in what we're doing. We are constant, continuous learners, always going out and trying to be involved in activities and learn new things. We hold trust as a priority. We want to make sure that people feel trust from us, that we create places where people can feel trust. And then collaboration is something that we have been working really hard on. Now that we have, you know, a few more people, we are six full-time people right now. We have the opportunity to go out and collaborate and meet more people. At one point, when Ms. Tyler was running the organization, she was the full-time person, Lake worked there part-time. You can only be in two places when you have two people. Now we have six people and we can be six places, but that's just an hour. Amazing the number of places we can go to every day. It's very exciting. And in fact, Lake is going to talk a little bit about some of those places that they go to every day.
All right. The slides will probably look slightly nicer in your print house than they do on the screen. They did not quite transition to PowerPoint as we had hoped that they would. But in your slides, they should be as they're intended. Just want to talk quickly about our youth programs, and particularly the impact that our youth programs are having on the youth of the city of Dayton. We have seven different youth programs. Six of these different youth programs impact individuals in the city of Dayton. And actually, the primary market of all of these programs or the most served number of students in all of these programs are students who live in the city of Dayton. Wanted to just kind of touch on a few programs. And then, like I said, particularly as we go through those programs, talk about as we look at the 2023-2024 school year, the impact that those programs had in numbers on those who live in the city. One of our most longstanding programs at NCCJ is the Anytown Youth Leadership Program. NCCJ has been in Dayton since 1978, so 47 years now. The Anytown Youth Leadership Institute has been serving students in Dayton since 2003. So this summer was our 21st year of running that camp continuously. Even during the years of COVID, we never missed a camp. In fact, it was an opportunity for us to expand programming during COVID. And so Anytown is really this immersive DEI camp for high school students, where we bring students together to learn about the issues that most importantly, our goal is what I call the "so what" portion of a program. It's great if we understand, we have to understand what I can do to change this system, right? And so we spend a lot of time really focusing on the "so what" portion, or the allyship and leadership, helping them to understand how can they use their voice as young change agents, right? We believe that they're not the leaders of tomorrow, they're the leaders of today. That's the reality, right, with our young people. And so the more tools that we can give them, the better. Here's some photos of some of our students going through the program. I love this quote, "Anytown inspires you to be a better person and help you understand others' points of view while allowing you to be your authentic self and ask questions." Really, that's our goal, right? That each person can show up to Anytown and feed them, that can be embraced for who they are, celebrated for who they are. Longstanding kind of NCCJ language is celebrating diversity, right? That's our goal, is giving people the opportunity to celebrate their diversity while having these courageous conversations. We also host a teen summit. And so this is something that we historically, NCCJ, has hosted. There was a several-year hiatus, but about three years ago, we got a national grant from the Allstate Foundation that funded this program and really brought it back to our community. The Teen Summit is something that we do twice a year, where we bring students together from about 20 different school districts to learn and have conversation with this really diverse array of students. The Teen Summit is particularly interesting for us because we had one yesterday. And so it is very fresh for us. Yesterday's theme was really about how the students can use social media to advocate for positive change in our community. A really cool aspect of our Teen Summit is that it's driven by the students. And so what happens at each of our summits is the students actually vote on what the theme will be for the next summit. And we announce that theme live time there for the students. And so yesterday, the students voted, and the students decided, and the students found out, all in one swoop, before they left for the day. And so they voted that for the next summit, which will happen in the spring, in February, that our students want to talk about particularly how mental health and diversity and inclusion overlap, and how efforts in diversity and inclusion positively impact the mental health of our community. We know that as we talk about adverse childhood experiences and some of these things that lead to negative health outcomes for an individual, racism and discrimination are some of those biggest adverse childhood experiences, right? And so when we can create a more equitable, inclusive community, we also have enormous positive impacts on students' mental health. And so we're really excited. Students voted overwhelmingly that that was the topic that they wanted to discuss at our Spring Teen Summit. Here's a quote from Fall 2022 from one of our Teen Summit participants, and some photos as well of those Teen Summits. "I was able to meet new people from different parts of Ohio. Getting to learn more about how people want to be treated was a good experience as well. I left the summit with the quote, 'Treat others how they want to be treated.'" So like I said, this is our theme. And these are some actual photos from yesterday. So a couple pictures. We haven't pulled out all the photos and compiled everything, but, you know, finished less than 24 hours ago. "The power of connection, building a better world with social media." We also have one of our longer-standing programs that was introduced by Chief Beal to NCCJ in 2010 is our Police Youth Together program. Police Youth Together is really aimed at bridging those relationships between the law enforcement and our communities, as well as our youth. Across the board, PAIT is our program that has the highest demand. Every summer, we usually have about a waiting list of 40 to 50 students beyond what our capacity is for camp. Also during COVID, we introduced the Spring Break Police Youth Together. What we noticed that a lot of our students did not have the opportunity to travel during spring break, or they didn't have the opportunity to do something productive during spring break. It also meant for many of our students that during spring break, they lost access to food, they lost access to positive trusted adults, they lost access frankly to the people who are looking out for signs of abuse with our young people, right? Every single day, our teachers. And so during COVID, we introduced the Spring Break Police Youth Together, which has been a really meaningful expansion of our program, but has really been a way that we're trying to make sure that those students during spring break have something exciting to do. One of my favorite things is that those students who maybe wouldn't have a chance to do something during spring break get to come back to their school and brag about how they did something cool for, you know, during that week, how they got to see a helicopter land in front of them and then go climb up in the helicopter. That's a pretty cool thing for a 10-year-old to be able to brag about to their students, right? And so the cool thing about Police Youth Together is it's a week of fun, it's a week of learning, but it's a week of connection, right? And so this is a really awesome opportunity. Here's some fun photos. PAIT typically will, in the summer, have around 70 or so students, age 10 to 13, as well as usually about 20 different law enforcement. A majority of our law enforcement are coming from the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office, as well as Dayton Police Department. But typically, in a week, PAIT, those 20 officers are actually coming from about 10 to 12 jurisdictions, primarily from Montgomery County, with a couple of them from Green County, the gentleman in the bottom right-hand corner, for example, he's a Fairborn police officer. And so we really try to bring a wide variety of officers together. This is that last year. Actually, I think this is last spring. So here's a couple of numbers from our regional programs for the 2023-2024 school year. This is students who reside in the city of Dayton. And so in 2023-2024 school year, we served 55 students from the city of Dayton. To put that in perspective, we have about 100 total students who attended that program last year. So over half of those students lived in the city of Dayton. PAIT was about 50 students. Again, we probably had about 100 to 120 students at PAIT. And then last year, we had 98 students from the city of Dayton attend the Teen Summit. Last year, unfortunately, we did have an unexpected Dayton Public Schools busing issue that resulted in one of our two summits, zero Dayton Public Schools attending because the buses did not show up that morning. That number would have been dramatically higher. To put that in perspective, yesterday, we had a Teen Summit. And out of the 249 students who attended, 106 of those students were Dayton Public Schools students. Every single Dayton Public Schools high school was represented there yesterday, ranging from 10 to 30 students from each of those Dayton Public High Schools. That's 106 DPS students. However, we do have several of our charter schools that are within the city of Dayton there as well. I think if you actually looked at the number of students who reside in the city of Dayton, it would be probably closer to 60 or 70%. We get a large number from like DECA, or Jim City Career Prep, or Liberty High School, some of these other schools that are in and around downtown Riverside. Another program that we have and actually piloted last year, I was talking to Matt Joseph here a moment ago about the Southeast Library, is actually a program that we did at the Southeast Library last year. Over the last two years, this is our SPIDE program, Students Promoting Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity Through Education. SPIDE is a youth-led program that works with high school students to really become those positive change agents that then go and implement these efforts within their school and community. Last year, we worked very, very closely, or over the last two years, with the Southeast Library, and were able to partner actually with Dayton Children's to enhance those efforts. This year, we're working very closely with the Southeast Library in addition to Belmont High School to present SPIDE in a way that's comprehensive for their students, the opportunity being that those high school students can work as peer leaders to impact change, primarily amongst the middle school students that attend Belmont. But even they're thinking more holistically as we talk with administration at Dayton Public about how maybe some of those Belmont students can actually even go out into some of the other middle school buildings, or even some of the elementary schools. Historically, SPIDE's most oftentimes, those high school leaders go off and work with sixth-grade students. And so we're really trying to think across the district on that. Again, some photos from various aspects of SPIDE. SPIDE is based on a group in Cleveland, in Shaker Heights, called the Student Group on Race Relations. And so each year, we actually have the opportunity to go to Cleveland with our students and show them really this beautiful model there. So that awesome rock climbing photo in the top there is Shaker Rocks, this wonderful climbing facility in Cleveland. And in the bottom left there, we're at Facing History in Ourselves, which our closest office to that national organization is Cleveland. In several of our Dayton Public Schools, we have an Agents of Change program, which is a longer-term DEI program. I'm going to go through some of these slides quickly because I want to give Adrienne an opportunity, but certainly encourage you to read these quotes and see this impact here. And then the last program that we have done here in Dayton is our Changing the Middle program. Changing the Middle is really our one youth program that is designed to be universal in nature. And so for most of our programs, the students opt in to attending the program, right? Changing the Middle is designed to be provided to an entire middle school. And we do it classroom at a time. We don't do assemblies. We know students don't always pay attention during an assembly. So we go classroom at a time through an entire school. Changing the Middle really focuses on bullying prevention. And so we think about bullying prevention through the lens, as a diversity and inclusion nonprofit, through the lens of diversity and inclusion, and how diversity and inclusion impact bullying, right? What we know is that a lot of the bullying we see in our schools stems from there's something different about you, and I'm going to do X, Y, or Z because that thing is different, right? And so what we say is, well, if we can work with our young people to help them understand that our differences are something to be valued, that our differences are something that make us special, that starts to change the narrative around bullying. Of course, in this program also, we're using prevention best practices around like positive decision-making, really helping our students to slow down the decisions they're making, to understand the advantages and disadvantages to each of these. So one of our students last year said, "Changing the Middle taught me to be kind to others and not judge a book by its cover." So this is a look at last year's programming in our schools. Changing the Middle, we did the full Belmont Middle School, EJ Brown Middle School, and then also did leadership groups. So leadership groups are an opportunity where we say, in Changing the Middle, we meet with the students for three hours. With the leadership group, we say, hey, we have some awesome students that we've worked with for those three hours, we're going to meet with them for the next 13 weeks, every single week, and give them the opportunity to create a project around anti-bullying within their school. So we had the opportunity to host three leadership groups last year, EJ Brown, as well as to host a leadership group in the Southeast Library, really trying to put a lot of effort around that Southeast Library problem that we're facing in the community. Of course, we had SPIDE in the Southeast Library, as I mentioned. And then we also did an Agents of Change at Belmont, as well as an Agents of Change at Mountain Street. Those are all Dayton Public Schools. Just kind of a look at how we also serve a lot of these charter schools. Changing the Middle was provided last year to the entire DECA Middle School, 6th through 8th grade, the entire Dayton Leadership Academy, 6th through 8th grade, Montgomery Prep, 6th through 8th grade, Richard Allen, 7th and 8th grade. And then we did leadership groups in Dayton Leadership Academies, Richard Allen and Montgomery Prep. Additionally, we did Agents of Change at DECA, Dayton Business Tech. And I can't see what that bottom one says, but I'm sure you all can. Jim City Career Prep, probably? Yeah, Jim City Career Prep. And so kind of widening that scope of where we're reaching these students as well. This is a moment to address something, I think, that's really impacting our community right now, and that's Montgomery County Adamus Funding. These programs were made possible by Montgomery County Adamus Programming. And that is what you saw in 2023 and 2024. To put this in perspective right now, for 2024/5 school year, right now, all that is budgeted is Changing the Middle at Dayton Leadership Academies. That is it. Out of all of these school-based programs, the only thing that the Adamus Funding allows us to do right now in these schools is Changing the Middle at Dayton Leadership Academies. So all of those other programs that you saw are on hold until Montgomery County Adamus Funding increases. And so for us, that is the impact that these funding dollars are, the real impact that these funding dollars are having for the students that reside in this community. We are hopeful that come January, we have an entirely different funding situation. We're not positive or confident that that's going to be the reality, right? We're very, very thankful for the opportunity that Montgomery County Adamus Funding has given us. But what we've learned in this last year is the enormous impact that that funding can have and the enormous impact that funding can take away very, very quickly, right? These are programs that for many of these schools, we've been doing with their entire middle school for maybe four years, every single year coming in and teaching all of their middle school students. In SPIDE, for example, those students look to us as their trusted adults. They look to us as an extension of their school, right? And unfortunately, we're not there. We are happy that Dayton Children's Hospital was able to receive a block grant from the city of Dayton and is subcontracting with NCCJ through that block grant. We are waiting for final confirmation on the city to begin work on that. But that block grant will allow us to continue the SPIDE program at the Southeast Library, as well as to continue Changing the Middle at Belmont. And so that is a good opportunity, and we're very thankful for that opportunity to be able to continue this work. I guess, do we ask if you have questions? Is that appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions on youth programs before Adrienne hops into the next piece?
Commissioner Charles Lobs, any questions?
I do have. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for being here. I do have questions, but it's more overall of the organization. So do you want me to hold tight until?
We have a couple, yeah, Adrienne has a couple agency things. So if it's best, that's perfectly fine.
That's fair, thank you.
Yeah, I was at the conversation last night around the Southeast Library. I didn't know if there were additional, particularly given your comments around the funding cuts. Just any thoughts on how we might move forward in that at the Southeast Library and Belmont High School and how to make sure that that space is accessible for students and patrons and everyone?
Yeah, I know Adamus has said in their Board Strategic Plan that library connections and programming within libraries are a priority for them. NCCJ has been very involved in a community coalition effort at the Southeast Library to try to figure out how we can lift up programming, but also comprehensive supports at the library. That's an effort that's been going on for the last year and a half. Me and Colleen Oaks from Montgomery County Prevention Coalition, who works for Adamus, have really been taking the lead on that effort. But that's a coalition of about 30 different members representing the school district, the police department, as well as many organizations, to figure out how we can comprehensively lift up the situation at the library. We're looking at it from a programmatic standpoint. Like I said, we're thankful that this Dayton Children opportunity allows us to seamlessly continue that programming there. The problem is right now is we're waiting on that block grant. Programming is not happening until that block grant kicks in. We're hoping that that will be in November. And so we're looking at programming as one capacity. And from NCCJ's standpoint, that's a capacity we have a lot to contribute. Externally to programming, though, it's an entirely systematic issue. And so this coalition is looking really at mental health care, or mental health as an issue that's affecting the library. Food insecurity is an issue that's affecting the library. Programming certainly, as well as substance use and fighting. And so these are really issues that we're trying to focus as a comprehensive standpoint. So I'm excited to see how that conversation, I unfortunately couldn't be there last night, but I'm really excited to see what comes out of that. And I'm meeting with the library twice a month to try to work through creative solutions with them.
Joseph?
I'm looking here, thank you, Mayor.
I just want to say, I could say a whole lot so much value in what you're doing. I spent five years, six years, running programs at three schools, three middle schools. And what we found, more specifically, was the fact that all the young people had the experiences, a variety of out-of-school culture-type experiences, had faster growth in terms of addressing issues as far as life is concerned, and education as well. The aspect of the data that we used was always used to determine how attitudes changed. Many young people we were dealing with had attitudes of not thinking they were going to live the past 16 years of age, that they were never going to be in a situation where they'd be married, have a house, a car, or a substitute job. And we saw those things change over a period of time. One of the best experiences that we had was to be able to pick seventh graders who had all got their Fs in their seventh-grade year. And with the Southern program, have an abundance of activities, such as what you mentioned here and more, and to find that we had a four-month learning game, a six-week program. We had like 81, 82 kids from huge middle schools I was working with, they showed that type of game through the program attitudes. And I got to pick the teachers and also run the program that we had. So we saw validation of all the type of things you're talking about right here. And our wish has always been to have another EKC Foundation grant that we could have these type of programs again, and we'll pursue to push that opportunities in front of more and more young people. So again, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Adrienne?
I just wanted to update a little bit on some of our community programs. So we had received a grant, and it's kind of a year from the Northwest Dayton Partnership, two years ago, to purchase a mobile opportunity center that we primarily bring out into Northwest Dayton and some of the Brooklyn Village neighborhoods as well. And that is about bringing information directly to the people. A lot of times, there's services or programs going on that people don't know anything about. So we're there to acquire information with them. We also distribute, because we are a prevention organization, we distribute gun locks and bill disposal bags as forms of prevention. So this is one of our other community programs that we're working with. And then I wanted to mention that on the 29th, we have our 2024 humanitarian celebration, our friendship celebration going on. And these are the awardees for this year. We have some pretty amazing people, probably some familiar faces. And I do apologize, the picture on the bottom right, that is not actually Matraya, but the PowerPoint you have has his actual picture. I didn't have it last night, sorry. But yeah, we have some amazing recipients. So there are still seats available for that if anyone was interested in coming. It's going to be a beautiful night. We are holding it again at the Dayton Art Institute. Those are photos from last year. Next week, we are going to be sharing an exciting announcement, and I'm moving into the meeting today. NCCJ has been working with Judge Rice and the Dayton Dialogue on Race Relations, and we are looking at bringing it back. We're going to start doing that. Yeah, they have reached out to us about NCCJ bringing that program back and carrying that legacy on.[1568.84] And we are very excited to be working with and partnering with them on that. So we're going to be doing fundraising, education, bringing the community together, looking for the right person to come and lead that program as well. So that's an exciting news. And I don't know, I'm sure you're all familiar with him, getting to spend a little time with Judge Rice. It's always like such an honor. He's such an amazing human, as are all the other people. Another community event, just to quickly mention, that we do here right in the city of Dayton is our Pride Rocks event. Pride Rocks is about eliminating suicide in the LGBTQ+ community specifically, held at the beautiful Levitt Pavilion. Last year, we had about 2,000 people that showed up and almost 100 vendors representing different community organizations, colleges, universities, some artists that were there. We had food trucks. And it's called Rocks for two reasons. One, we paint rocks, as you can see, and those rocks are then distributed. And on the back of the rock, it now has the 988 Suicide Prevention number for people to reach out to if they needed. And then we also call it Rocks because we have performers on the stage at lovely Levitt. We'll be doing that again in May this year. I also wanted to share with you some exciting news. In September of 2025, we will be hosting the National Federation for Just Communities Conference here in Dayton, Ohio. NFJC is made up of old NCCJs. In 2005, the national organization disbanded. But what the organizations did back then is they just created this group for people with like-minded organizations. When NCCJ was national, we had health benefits, we had, everything was run through the New York office. When that disbanded, it was still like, well, there's not a lot of organizations that do the work that we do. We do a lot of different things. So we continue to work together and support each other, and we have a conference. These are pictures from this year. We were in Tulsa, Oklahoma. So we got to, I had the opportunity to visit where old Black Wall Street was. Meet a lot of people from around the country. But we will be hosting it here, and we are very excited to highlight the good things that are going on in our community. And there are so many wonderful initiatives that we want to be able to bring and let people know about. I felt Tulsa was amazing, but was very heavy and trauma-focused. I want to be able to show the good. So last Friday, had the opportunity with the Biennial Black Midwestern Museum to take a bus tour through our city of Dayton, which was pretty cool because there were areas that I was unaware of that I got to learn some more about. We're looking at bringing our people on a bus tour and, like I said, just really highlighting the great things we have in our community over those days. And we hope to be able to connect with all of you and highlight the great things that are going on within our city.
Yeah, I heard when I was speaking last week, so many people talked about some of the great things that they experienced.
It was a phenomenal conference. You did a really great job with it. So I'm excited and want to learn more, speak with the library and see some of the things that they do as well. All right, really quickly, just we do workplace professional development. We go into organizations and we help create more inclusive spaces. We had a lot of guests, and we just wanted to say thank you so much for having us here today. Very appreciate your time.
No, we're short of time. Commissioner Judge Los.
Yes. Thank you.
One of the commissioners that had a question to, I'm sure.
Yes, I have two questions. The first is, so what measures of programming do you have in place that you are essentially deploying to adhere to your mission in light of the political climate, right? What we all witnessed with the city of Springfield. And then in addition to that, what we are seeing in the conflict in the Middle East? So how are you adhering to your mission with a number of those things that are going on right now?
So we are always working at our mission and ensuring that the work that we do. So I think as far as our political climate, we are a nonprofit, so we are a partisan organization. We don't get involved in politics, but we are working really to have those difficult conversations. We try to teach people to do that, to have those spaces where they can do these things. You want to talk to us?
No.
I think Blake has an answer.
I mean, I was just gonna say, I think really, central to our, to the way that we do our programming is around conversations, right? And so the goal is not that we stand up and teach. The goal is that there's answers in the room. So I think the beautiful thing about that way of doing programming is it allows the people in the room to talk about the things that are happening and affecting them in the world, right? And particularly in our youth programs, right? Our youth are incredibly aware of these things. We don't always give them credit about being aware of what's happening politically, but they're incredibly aware of these things. So to me, I think it's embedded in the way that our programming is built that we say, let's get together and have a conversation. And so creating spaces for these conversations are important. And even talking through Springfield, I'm meeting just next week with a Clark County Prevention Group as well to figure out how we can do potentially a summit in Springfield to really be able to address some of the concerns that they're seeing in Springfield as an outcome of these issues.
Okay, I would just say that because in light of everything that we are seeing what's going on with our youth, we have a growing immigrant population. We have some uneasy tensions in our district. So just having those conversations and making sure we're using that space. But I'm happy to hear that the community dialogue will now resume and resurface. So maybe that's an avenue that would be used to have those key conversations in light of the Middle East conflict, as well as the political climate that we're in. Last question, so what measures, what mechanisms, rather, do you have in place for recruitment? Like, how are people learning more about your programming, whether it's students, whether it's adults? It seems like, correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like there is a huge focus on youth. I'll, correct me if I'm wrong again, but I would like to see more programming on, also in the workplace, as you mentioned, as well as in the community. Are you working with our community engagement division, our planning department? How is it geared towards our adults?
So we do have workplace professional development, and we go out into organizations. We have recently hired a person to do marketing for that. That's the first time we've done that. So she's been with us about six months, working on getting out there and building relationships within the community. So that's something that we are doing. We do not work with the department, we're collaborating with other organizations. That's a part of your question.
I would say generally on a youth standpoint, though, we work with about 25 to 30 different recruitment partners, right? And so even as you're talking about like immigrant populations, for example, one of the ways that we recruit young people is through Welcome Dayton. We have a really close connection, particularly with Jeanette there at Welcome Dayton. And so really, our goal, we don't have access, I always say, like, we can have the highest quality programs. If we don't have the students, it's useless, right? And so we work very, very closely with our partners to be truly partners, to be collaborators, to help us even develop new innovative solutions. But they really are able to bring the community to the table.
I would encourage you to have a conversation with our Recreation and Youth Services Director. He just mentioned last week that they are having difficulty, if you will, with connecting our immigrant population with our recreation centers and some centers, excuse me, and some of the programming that is provided. So in addition to working with our Division of Community Engagement, but also our Recreation and Park Services. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And just quickly, is that all right?
Yes, please.
Quickly just add, one of the things too with the Dayton Dialogue on Race Relations that we want to really focus on is, you know, there's a certain number of weeks that people participate in it. But then we want to come up with the community products, projects that people are interested in or specific topics that they may want to have deeper conversations to. And that'll depend on what the group of people want, and we'll go from there with that. So that could also come into some of these other topics that you had mentioned.
Thank you.
I'm good.
I'm good, too. Thanks for that, Blake.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the time.
Appreciate you as well.
Great value services.
Thank you.
No need to tie this up.
I love your jacket today, Mayor. Why?
Everything for the presentation, do I just?
Thanks for bringing us back to 1991 with that look and fly.
How else would you describe that?
Well, if it was 1991, I would have said look and fly.
You could say it has drip. I know, everybody's wearing pink. Well, it is breast cancer.
You had a presentation on breast cancer.
That makes sense. Like the NFL out here.
Exactly.
It has a chump-like pink jacket.
It's a good-looking jacket.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's good to see you all this morning. I'm Erica Field, Senior Director of Learn to Earn Dayton. And on behalf of our partners at the table and our partners in the back, we wanted to thank you for allowing us to give you an update on a program that we decided to uplift in Northwest Dayton and Access to Counsel program for residents of Northwest Dayton. Before we get started, I would like to have everyone introduce themselves, our partners that will be presenting this morning.
Hi, I'm Emma Snails. I am the Director of Dayton Impact at Learn to Earn Dayton. That's wireless.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Depp Levy. I'm a senior attorney and advocate for basic legal equality. It's good to see you all.
Probably loud enough. Hi, everyone. I'm Marty Garrus. I am the Dayton Municipal Clerk of Court. And I have participated in our sprints and other things, and I'm a big supporter of this program that is going into, or going to start here shortly. Thank you.
And I would also like to mention, we do have several members of our partners at Omega CDC who are here with us. Thank you for being here. And then Zach Sufielder, thank you as well. And just want to give thanks to Citywide, who has been a part of these ongoing conversations to uplift Access to Counsel. So as many of you know, I'm just going to speak a little bit about Learn to Earn. As many of you know, we are a regional creative and career organization that's really focused on ensuring children, learners, and their families can thrive regardless of race, gender, or zip code. And a part of the work that we do is really to analyze and track the achievement of students along the Creative Career Continuum. And as a part of that work, it's really important for us to examine the environment that learners and their families are living in and the enabling factors that contribute to the overall success of our learners. And because of that, our track data, as we're looking at it, and our benchmarks, really indicate a critical relationship between housing stability and student success. And all of the work that we have been doing over the past few years is really looking at how we are looking into housing stability and we're uplifting conditions for social and economic mobility for our families and our students. And so when we think about chronic absenteeism, one of the things that we really touch on, housing stability is the greatest predictor of chronic absenteeism for our students. And we all know chronic absenteeism affects students' ability to learn, their graduation rates, and their preparedness for college and career planning. And so it's something that we really wanted to make sure that we're uplifting as an organization. And part of the reason why we're at the table, hoping to convene partners to uplift and access the council program.
It's a PDF.
Oh. Okay. So in addition to what I've just talked about, we know that there's a critical need, as we've been looking over the past few years, about ensuring that our residents in the city have access to housing opportunities and stability in their neighborhoods. And we know that when we think about the pandemic, that has just exacerbated conditions of disparities in almost every area that we can think about. Housing predominantly has been impacted. When we think, we're going to talk a little bit about the numbers, the eviction numbers later in the presentation and the story behind the numbers. But it's really important that we understand, I think, as a community, that eviction virtually touches every aspect of a family's basic needs, whether or not we're thinking about employment, whether or not we're thinking about their home, whether or not we're thinking about education, the ability for a child to stay in the home. And so it's important for us as a community to have a collective focus to uplift initiatives that address safe, stable neighborhoods with secure housing opportunities. So the folks who are actually being impacted, and you can see on the slide that it disproportionately impacts women of color with families, which also makes this a race equity priority that we need to be uplifting. There's also an issue with an imbalance of power when we think about who is being represented. Nationwide is showing that only 3% of renters are represented compared to 81% of landlords on average. And then, you know, as I talked before, housing stability is by far the greatest predictor of student absenteeism for school. So we can continue to have conversations, and we'd be here for hours talking about the reasons for why we need to be uplifting a program like this. And because of the critical focus, there have been a lot of programs, task force collectives that have been uplifted, that really speak to the importance of housing stability and eviction prevention. I'll go through a few of them. Even before COVID-19 in 2019, Mayor Nan Whaley introduced the Eviction Task Force to uplift the city's role in addressing how we could collectively address evictions in individuals living in poverty. As continuing conversations happened, the city sent folks, I think, housing advocates to Bloomberg, I'm sorry, as a part of Bloomberg Initiative, went to have conversations about how we address the housing crisis here in Dayton, which resulted in the Dayton Housing Roundtable and eventually the Housing Policy Platform that the commission approved last year. And then we have several design sprints that housing advocates have participated in in Dayton. So the Results for America: Advancing Housing Justice Design Sprint in 2022. And right now, we are currently participating in another Results for America Housing Sprint, the Tenant Right to Council Solutions that's happening now. And so we have several members here who are part of that initiative. In addition, the Social Determinants of Health Housing Work Group was formed. And this was a subgroup of everyone reached on Infant Vitality Task Force in 2022. And the mission was really to address infant mortality through housing policy, education, and awareness. And the last I'm going to talk about is the Northwest Dayton Partnership Power Place Plan, which you've heard Learn to Earn talk about, all of the work that we've done to engage residents in creating a resident vision for Northwest Dayton. And so I'm going to speak a little bit about that. As you know, and as Learn to Earn has shared with you, a few years ago, we engaged residents in Northwest Dayton to look at opportunities to promote racial justice, social and economic mobility for residents, residents who specifically have been impacted by and marginalized by the historic effects of redlining. This was made possible by a catalytic investment by Blue Meridian Partners. And the plan really uplifted four critical elements that residents wanted us to focus on. Early childhood education, K-12 education, community culture, and housing clearly emerged as a clear priority that your residents in the city said that we need to be uplifting, we need to be working on specifically uplifting an Access to Counsel pilot for Northwest Dayton. And now I'm going to turn it over to Depp to kind of walk us through very specifically a timeline that has led to where we are now.
So before I kind of delve into the timeline, I just want to talk about, I just want to mention how there have been so many partners in this endeavor. So the city has played a really significant role in trying to improve housing for residents. The county, a lot of nonprofits have been a part of this work, the city clerk of courts. And so we're just really thankful to see a movement building, people really engaging and dialoguing on how we can improve housing in Dayton. So as many of you know, in 2018, the Eviction Lab, which was started by Matthew Desmond, he wrote the book Evicted in 2016, that really launched a conversation across the nation about evictions. They published a report that indicated that Dayton had a decently high eviction rate, 5.94%, is what they indicated. And in 2019, former Mayor Whaley formed an eviction task force to try to address that rate and other things related to evictions. In 2020, the clerk, the court announced, Marty's predecessor, that online access to eviction records after three years would not be available. And then in 2020, the city passed two really pivotal ordinances, a rent receipt ordinance requiring landlords to provide a rent receipt if tenants paid their rent in either cash or money order, and capping late fees at a really reasonable rate at 5% of the monthly rent. 2021, Dayton joins a number of cities across the state to pass Pay to Stay, and that allows tenants to stay in the residence if they can pay their rent reasonable late fees prior to an eviction filing. And then after a filing, pay the court costs as well. 2021, we saw a really amazing exhibit come to Dayton called Undesign the Red Line, and it talks about redlining and the historical segregation that continues today and where we see, Emma will talk about where high eviction filings are happening or in still some of those neighborhoods that have been historically redlined. In '21 and '22, ABEL, we partnered with my Valley Community Action Partnership to use COVID rental assistance funds to increase representation for tenants in Montgomery County. And then in 2022, Dr. Rao, who's just done some fabulous work, she had a, she released a Locked Out and Left Behind focus. It was a piece on eviction and children and how their long-term devastating effects of housing insecurity on children. So 2022, we saw UD and other partners have their first Imagining Community Symposium, and they focused on housing. As Erica mentioned, in '22, we had our first Results for America Sprint. And so we had a really diverse group of partners that were part of that, Dayton Municipal Clerk, Home Bowl, representatives from the city of Dayton, representatives from the county, including Commissioner Rice's aide, Antonio Jones, representative from Sinclair Community College, and then ABEL was also a part of that. In '23, we saw the Evicted exhibit arrive in Dayton. And along with that, there was, the Phasing Project published a book. They interviewed tenants and landlords, court personnel, legal aid attorneys, bailiffs, other people, and they published this book of stories around eviction. So that was a really incredible resource. You can get it on Amazon if you haven't got it. You can get it on Amazon if you haven't gotten a copy of it. In '23, February '23, we saw the second Imagining Community Symposium. And again, there was another focus on housing and rights of counsel. Then in, really just a year and a half ago, we saw the city pass the Source of Income Protection Ordinance. And members of the Sprint team about six months later spoke on a Facing Project podcast and included Tim Thomas from the UC Berkeley School to talk about housing. And then very excitingly, in September of '03, this city's Dayton Housing Policy included a focus on access to council. What's not on here I wanted to mention is that in the fall of '23, tenants formalized and became the Dayton Tenants Union. And then in the spring of '24, the Social Determinants of Health Work Group released a policy toolkit that provides a guide to local governments on tenant protections. And the goal of the toolkit is to help facilitate discussions in the housing space to create a more equitable environment for all.
I'm going to share some numbers with you guys. At first, I want to say thank you to Marty and Zach for sharing their data with us. They do a great job at sharing really comprehensive eviction data, as much as components, you know, components, so I really do appreciate that. This is just the number of cases per quarter from January 2022 to December 2023. We have increased evictions from 2022 to 2023, and we'll probably see another increase from 2023 to 2024. This is a map of all the evictions in Dayton from 2022 through 2023. So you can see that the majority are concentrated in the northwest and west, and then also on the east side of the city of Dayton. And then this is a total per person code. So you can see that the vast majority of evictions in the city of Dayton happen in the 45406 and 45405. So the code is almost 50% of all evictions in the city happen in those two codes. And then here you can see the city of Dayton representation numbers. So for tenants, self-representing, 97% of tenants are self-represented. ABEL represents 2%, and only 1% are privately represented, so we're below national average. And then for property owner representation, you can see 11% are self-represented, while 89% do have a private lawyer. So we've got to have this pretty balanced balance from each one. Okay, so we want to talk a little bit about what this pilot is going to look like. This is not an expensive project. And so from the very generous funding that we received from National Government, we, hopefully, were able to serve 125 families. As you can see from the numbers we shared, that's a drop in bucket, unfortunately, but 125 more families that are getting help right now, so we're very beneficial. This funding is going to provide the capacity for a full-time staff attorney at ABEL, who will only be able to do these cases. So our thought is we'll probably be dealing around 10 cases a month, which is still, to be fair, a long for one, depending on who you're dealing with, but we'll have social support on your ABEL. And we also included a part-time social worker as part of this work. As you know, not all evictions can be prevented. And even when evictions are prevented, there's probably some other things going on that can lead to these systems. A big part of this project is the evaluation. So a portion of this funding is going to SOUT, which is a nationally-known firm that does access to council evaluations all over the country. So they've done Cleveland, they're in Cincinnati right now. Working with them, they, this is what they do. So they have, we've been working with them from the very beginning. They helped ABEL set up their data collection system so that they were, from the very beginning, collecting the data we need to be able to populate this. We will hopefully be able to be here a year from now to share with you all the results of what we found. One of the things that SOUT also does is a cost benefit analysis. And so one of the great things they do is say, is tell you exactly how much it costs your city or county to have this many evictions and how much you can save by having less. So also I'm about to share with you.
And taking that conversation a little further, we had access, because we're working with SOUT, we were able to get some numbers from some of the jurisdictions that they've worked with. Although we don't have the information yet, as Emma said, we will come back and share more details on the cost benefit analysis. But for some of the jurisdictions that SOUT has worked with, their cost benefit analysis, I just want to share with you a few. So for Pennsylvania is one, but they actually were able to implement this statewide. And the CBA found that cost savings would result in $3 to $6, $3 to $6 for every dollar invested in legal representation for tenants. And if fully implemented across the state of Pennsylvania, the program providing universal access to legal representation would result in eviction files, filings declining by 5% a year. In 2022, their economic assessment in Detroit, the Right to Counsel Initiative, led to over $18 million in annual cost savings for social safety net responses. The Detroit City Council later passed their Right to Counsel legislation in May of 2022. And then in Cleveland, which was the first Midwestern city to pass Right to Counsel, the evaluation of the program showed 1.1 million in cost savings related to housing, social safety net responses, 1.4 million in economic value preserved by retaining residency in Cleveland, and many others totaling up to 4.7 million in estimated fiscal savings. So the evaluation and the cost benefit is really a critical piece of this because we know that, as Emma said, we can only serve 125. And so the hope is this data will show us the savings and the benefit of scaling throughout the entire city and hopefully the county. So because of what we've talked about, this is a pilot, only serving 125. And we know that the demand is much greater than the capacity to serve and to meet the demand. It was really important for us to work with our partners, our community partners, on the ground to figure out ways in which we can still assist and provide wraparound services for those families who will not be able to come through the program. And it's really important to share that not everybody, just because a family is facing eviction, that not everybody is automatically going to get representation. You have to actually have a defense, right? Like, we have to, we have to know that whatever has happened, we have the possibility of being able to go to court and represent you and actually help with the eviction process. However, we know that's not the case with every family, but we do know that most families who contact us still need some sort of assistance. And so we're going to be working with our partners, Omega CDC, and other partners to really make sure that we're providing access to information around the program, how to access it, what to expect, but also other avenues that folks can take to address some of their housing issues and make sure that residents understand their rights as a tenant in the city of Dayton. So it's really important that we're not just focusing on the representation, that this is paired with supportive services because the housing issues that residents are facing are so complex. So, did you want to add anything?
I think the one I was going to ask, so the, I said this question's going to come up. How are we deciding 125 families? So the parameters that we're putting around the qualifications for the families is going to be living in 45405 or 45406. The exception to that will be if the families that are already enrolled in Omega Services live in Northwest Dayton, but as we know, there's little slivers of '02 and '17 in there, so we will take those case by case. The other 200% of federal poverty limit, they have to either have children in the home or have a pregnant person in the home.
And a defense.
And that a defense, yeah, that's the important, one of the important parts.
So we do want to thank the city, and we also want to thank our partners that have helped made this possible. We do have some of our funders up here, but we also wanted to thank Blue Meridian, of course, who's not up here, who actually helped make this possible as well. So we would entertain, Marty, did you want to add anything? I know.
They can ask.
Okay, all right. So thank you again for allowing us to share more details. And if, we'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Appreciate it. This is good information, especially understanding what's happening to some of the cities that are, that are just working. As mentioned in some of the comments that you made here with your data, it affects others, especially those young people involved in situations. I've been in many situations in my past on testing day, for example. And a young person coming home for the day before testing when the family's belongings are out on the street. And the aspect of thinking about how well that child's going to perform in that test for that week is challenging, is heartbreaking. So we understand these things happen, there are multiple reasons for these things to happen. So the aspect of trying to find a path to see what we look at that would benefit us in the city, you know, of course, looking at, always looking at dollars in terms of how we can make a difference in these places. But I want that, Ms. Charles Lawson, she's always the first, the junior commissioner, to ask her questions and make her comments first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you all very much. I am so excited that you all are here this morning to provide an update. Thank you to all of the partners, Omega CDC, a number of partners that are here. Again, this is very exciting work that is being done. I really, really appreciate, Ms. Phil, to you uplifting the fact that you have to have a defense and there is a process in place. And yes, in fact, this is a pilot program. My colleague and I, we were just talking in regards of the data and really seeing where the savings is. So we look forward to the cost benefit analysis. In addition to that, we just approved what, last week, additional monies to our shelters, our homeless shelters. And knowing that they are at capacity and there is additional services and monies that are needed to make sure that we are housing our unhoused population and those who are experiencing eviction. So again, I don't have many questions. I just wanted to uplift the work that you all are doing, know that I'm advocated and a strong supporter of this work and this initiative. I just would like for Mr. Garrus, if you would, please just make the correlation in the work that's being done with the eviction still work that you are doing and your line of work to where we are with this pilot program, if you could speak to that.
We have approximately 10 more minutes.
Yeah, I'll be quick. So the variety of different things, there's no silver bullet to address any of the housing issues that are here. So a lot of the issues that, specifically in Dayton, we have is beyond the city of Dayton. The county has not adopted similar things that we have adopted here in this state. All of our local jurisdictions throughout the entire county, we need to come together, and then the state legislator needs to act on a lot of this. So we can do what we can do here in Dayton, but if that's not being spread out, then people just tend to go to the next town over and do the same thing in the next town over. In Dayton in particular, we do about, I want to say about 50% of the evictions in the county, give or take approximately. So we are the focal point of some of the things that do happen here, but it does spread out throughout the entire county. So there are a variety of different ways to tackle this issue. The state law allows pretty much every landlord, if you miss a payment, to start an eviction proceeding. That eviction proceeding then gets filed in the Dayton Municipal Court. A lot of the tenants who get served those documents don't actually appear for their court date, so the eviction just happens, it's called by default. So because nobody came and contested it, the eviction happens. This here is an avenue that gets these 125 people at least a way to answer those eviction filings and then discuss it. Beyond just doing the Right to Counsel thing, the eviction ceiling, after you have an eviction filed on your record, the databases that organizations and landlords use have a notation on your name that you have been evicted, and people are less likely to run to you in the future. So they run your name through it, they call it a scarlet E, and when that pops up, they'll just go to the next person and the next person until they find somebody who, that they determine can trust to pay the rent. Because inevitably, nobody likes to be in court, landlords included. So all of these things are in a way to try to address this issue. It is going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to do to try to bring everything together and really go forward to address this issue. This is a great step, and it is something that I'm very, very supportive of and that I've been working with these partners since I took office. So I'm very excited for you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fairchild.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation and the work. A pool, say 2,500 evictions a year, how many of those would have a defense? So the eligible candidates have a total pool.
That's a great question. Probably if I knew the answer, I would be in a different position. But it's a little bit hard to say, and I know that's a lawyer answer, but really it takes an evaluation of each of those cases to determine if there's a defense. So I've been a, I've been a legal aid lawyer my entire career, so this is my 25th year. And surprisingly, there are a lot of, there are defenses in a lot of cases that people would think that there are defenses, right? So sometimes we have landlords who are not, the property's not individually owned, it's owned by an entity, but they're not filing with a lawyer. So that's the unauthorized practice of law, we see that happen quite a bit. Sometimes, there's a three-day notice that's required to be issued in every, issued before every eviction filing in the state of Ohio. Sometimes landlords don't use the right form, it doesn't have the right language, they fill it out incorrectly, so that's a defense. And then when you get into federally subsidized housing and public housing, there's a lot of requirements that are often missed. So it's hard for me to say how many. I would say quite a few, there are defenses. Now, what I will say about that is just because you have a defense and you can win the eviction, that doesn't mean there couldn't be a refiling that would happen pretty quickly. So that's why it's important to have all these different levers, like a social worker involved, rental assistance involved, you know, community partners involved, help support that family. The goal is to get them over that hurdle, but also have more long-term housing stability, right, for what the mayor talked about. And I'll just mention briefly my story. I grew up in poverty, my father was a veteran, because he was a veteran, we were able to own our own home, and that provided significant housing stability. And so we know that housing instability negatively affects every facet of life. So we're really excited about this program.
No, I'm just trying to get a gauge, like, if we're able, let's say we had unlimited resources and we could help everyone, are we talking about over half of the clients could benefit from this, or less than a quarter? I mean, can we ballpark broadly?
Yeah. So, I mean, what I would say, Commissioner Fairchild, is having a lawyer in an eviction case makes a difference in every case. Even if there isn't a defense, you can negotiate a move out, you could potentially agree for eviction ceiling, right? Maybe you could work out a repayment plan. So having defenses surely makes it, is a way of narrowing the funnel. But also, I would say that even in cases where there isn't like a straightforward defense, having a lawyer often helps resolve the matter favorably for both the parties.
Thank you, that's helpful.
To go off of that, Commissioner Fairchild, a lot of cases that do come in front of the Dayton Municipal Court, individuals will, usually a landlord just wants the house back. So if you agree to move out, they'll seal the eviction record, that will remove it from the case, from the history, so you won't have that scarlet E following you around. You'll still have the filing that existed, but they can do agreed entries and stuff like that that will attempt, so with unlimited money, it would be great for everybody who has filed in the Dayton Municipal Court to have access to.
And that's my next question, is there a tool upstream? I mean, if we get to this point, it becomes a very expensive proposition, right? Is there a tool upstream that could interrupt the eviction process, either keeping the people in their home or helping them move out in a?
So you're talking about before the eviction is filed? Is that right? Yeah, so lots of things, right? So we learned during COVID how impactful rental assistance was and how having that available was able to prevent eviction filings, that's number one. Number two, education, people being able to connect with a lawyer or just getting education about the eviction process, understanding how things work, having ordinances like the city of Dayton has, like pay to stay, right? So pay to stay effectively lets tenants be able to get current before an eviction filing happens. And without those ordinances, as Marty mentioned, you know, landlords could just go ahead and proceed with the filing, and the tenants wouldn't get an opportunity to pay. So tenant protection ordinances, rental assistance, education, having lawyers obviously represent them and/or provide education later on. And then mediation, so the city of Dayton has a great mediation program, and mediation is available prior to evictions. So that's a really upstream approach to try to resolve issues. And maybe, like, evictions aren't all about non-payment. I know that's what we hear about, but sometimes it's about housekeeping, and people just need help, like, maybe they have some challenges and they need people to support them. Sometimes it could be about neighbor disputes, right? How can we resolve that without going to court? So mediation can be a really effective tool. And even in non-payment, sometimes they can work out a payment arrangement to get people current. I don't know if others have some.
One last.
Discriminatory in nature, which your HRC sees a lot of those cases as being handled by the organization.
Question, Ms. Fields, if I understand you right, the cost benefit, the benefit accrues in savings around social safety net spending. Montgomery County is the largest, is one who has that responsibility in our community. Was the conversation with Montgomery County, I didn't see them listed as one of the partners, and, you know, they're going to accrue the benefit if we're in these investments, so...
So we've been having conversations with, with the county, and there has been interest in coming to the table and having these conversations. We also partner with the county, with our Montgomery County Two Gen Collaborative, and so this is part of the larger conversation when we think about social and economic mobility and neighborhood stability. And Tawana, we've also had conversations, when we were initially trying to apply for a grant for this to scale, there have been conversations of interest and support for the county, but that is an ongoing conversation that we need to have, as we know, there's a large benefit that the county would see because of the safety net.
Commissioner Fairchild, to go off of that, I've been in contact with other clerks around, the local clerks, and I've gotten their data from them. So I wouldn't necessarily say they would all be on board with it, but there is, they know that this exists and that we are proceeding with it here.
Yeah, thank you. This is really good data, and thank you for that question. That was the one I was going to go to first, because, you know, there is this great benefit to the county, and I think they should be playing in the space. But it is a pilot. I do want to look at the data. I'll be honest with you, I was a little concerned that a program like this would tend to gum up the system or maybe even create more opportunities for eviction. A lot of that has been alleviated with this conversation because I'm glad to hear that there has to be a, you know, a path, that, that has to be a defense. So that goes a long way, alleviating some of these concerns. But I do want to see the data, and I would be very interested in having a more detailed breakdown of where the cost savings actually lie. I am sure that they are mainly with the social safety net and social services programs, but just to lay that out, I think it would make a stronger argument for the county's involvement in this. That's all I really have.
Commissioner Shaw, I think we all know that when we, and that's why we're prioritizing getting this data, to then be able to go make a case to both mission here and then the county.
Thank you, Mayor. My colleagues covered my questions. I just want to thank you very much for this work. This is hard work, this is complex, and I think you're going about it exactly the right way. So thank you all, thank you partners, too.
Yeah, I have to echo that. Thank you all for being here, thank you for the work that's been done already, and thank you for the work that you're gonna do, because I know there's a lot to make happen for us. So again, thank you, and our minds clear.
We'll see you in a year.
Yeah, hopefully before then.